I'd like to call the order, the study session for May 2nd, 2017. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Leitner?
Here.
Commissioner Walz?
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Commissioner Tompkins?
Commissioner Mahoney?
Here.
Commissioner Plachek?
Here.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Chatwell?
Here.
Oh. All right. Wonderful. Thank you.
We've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Any public comment? Last chance. Seeing none, we'll move right on. Administrator Overton.
Good morning. Jim, if you'd be so kind as to come forth and introduce our guests and the topic. Thank you.
Morning Commissioners. For our discussion of pension bonding, we'd like to have some representatives from PFM Financial Advisors. Carrie Blanchett and Nate Watson did the analysis based on our actuarial data, and they're prepared to discuss that in depth and answer any questions you may have.
Carrie, before you start arguing, do I need to explain what the overall concept, or are you going to cover that here first?
The overall concept of a pension bond?
Yeah, what we're doing.
I think it's part of the presentation. Good morning. Again, my name's Carrie Blanchett. I'm with PFM Financial Advisors, financial advisor for the county. And we were asked to come here just to talk about our analysis of the potential for the county to issue pension obligation bonds. A number of years ago, legislation was passed by the state to enable municipalities in the state of Michigan to do bonding to fund their unfunded liability for pension and OPEB cost. And I'll go through some of the conditions in order to do that. And there's been a number of municipalities throughout the state that have done that to date, and there's, you know, other ones that are in process. I think you all had the presentation sent to you ahead of time, so I don't know if you want to, if you have questions, if you want to ask them as we go, or however you would prefer.
I think that would be good as, as you go through the presentation, people can interrupt and have that conversation about a particular topic or issue right then.
First of all, just background on PA 329, which is the authorizing statute that allows the county, if you would so desire, to issue bonds. It allows you to issue bonds for both the pension and the post-employment healthcare. You must have a double A credit rating in order to issue debt. There's legislation pending right now that would allow that to go down to an A rating. That's being pushed, I think, by a number of cities in the state. But, you know, currently, you are, you know, well into that category, so you do qualify. And you have to be, in order to qualify, you must have closed out your defined benefit plan to a defined contribution plan, or stopped the accruals of that liability going into there. You must publish a notice of intent, just like you would on a number of other debt issuances to give the public the right to file a petition, to call for a vote. And you must have approval from the Michigan Department of Treasury to do the financing. That approval is more comprehensive. It typically requires going and meeting with them and going through the whole plan. This slide is just sort of a summary that you've met a number of the conditions to issue debt. The only thing you would have remaining is to publish a notice of intent and to get approval from the state of Michigan. And to also prepare a comprehensive financial plan, which I'll talk about in a minute. The financial plan that's required by state law would have to have certain things in it. First of all, it actually makes you go through how your pension plan is currently funded and your healthcare. This is a question that is asked often. Well, I'm not issuing debt for my healthcare, post-employment healthcare. Why do I have to talk about that? The state wants to make sure that the board and your public is informed on how well-funded both of those plans are, because they really almost go hand in hand. They're both, you know, post-employment benefits that your employees receive. So they want to know about how well-funded that is, how you pay for it currently, what your plan would be going into the future, and how you would service the bond payments for the debt if you were to issue pension bonds. And most frequently, that, the answer is, we would spread the cost just the same way as we would spread the annual payments, the annual payments to the pension system. And it also has to have the debt amortization schedules and the comparison on what the projected debt payment schedules are as compared to your annual required contributions, because in all cases, there's typically savings to the local unit or the government to issue the bonds, at least projected savings. If you were to issue bonds for the post-employment healthcare, you would actually also have to show that you have a plan in place to mitigate increases in healthcare cost. But since you're not looking at that, I won't spend any time on that. The bonds themselves do not require voter approval. They do count against your legal debt capacity. And they are taxable. So unlike all the other debt, the debt you've recently issued in the process of issuing, which are tax exempt, these bonds are taxable. So they carry just a slightly higher interest rate than your other bonds. They may be paid for over 30 years. However, the Department of Treasury restricts it to this no longer than your current amortization schedule. So if your current amortization schedule is 20 years, for example, they will not let the bond issue go beyond 20 years. Now, I've had counties just go back to their actuary and say, you know, the reality is, we know you're going to be paying retirement, you know, for a long time, past, you know, whatever the time period. So we've had other entities go back to their actuary and say, give me a little bit longer, you know, amortization schedule, and then Treasury will let you go out to that longer time period. The risk of issuing pension bonds is that the bond payments themselves are hard costs. Right now, you know, if you have a difficult year, you know, you may not fund your pension costs fully. Once that bond issue is sold, you don't have the option. You know, if there's a bad year, that debt service obligation becomes a first budget obligation of the county. So you should make that payment, or you have to make that payment. Actually, a number of cities and counties that have done that, that the bond issuance actually see that as a benefit, because in their view, it's making good to a commitment they made to their employees in the past. So they're, you know, dedicated that that is, they're making those payments. It uses your debt capacity up. In the most part, for counties, it's not a large issue. We see this as more of an issue for cities, and I have, we have a slide in a minute here that will go through that. So you're not as constrained, because you have a bigger tax base. It does not eliminate the potential that you may have additional unfunded actuarial liabilities in the future. Just like with your current system, if you didn't do the bond issue, if your rate of return was lower than the current assumed rate of return, your liability will increase. If you have a really good year where you're earning higher than your assumed rate of return, your funding level is going to increase. So for a number of these issues that were sold, at this point, you know, the ones that were, for example, in MERS, you know, MERS had a really good year last year. So they're going to show in their next, you know, cycle, being overfunded, over 100% funded. So it can go either way. So you just need to know that you have to take a long view, because just with your current system, you can't look at rate of returns.
You're referring to overfunding with people who have bonded for their debt, not MERS being overfunded.
Right. So we are only allowed by law to fund up to your current UAL, unfunded liability. So they funded to their current unfunded liability. Well, when you make more than what the assumed rate was, chances are, this cycle, they'll show a little bit overfunded. But there'll be years that they probably make lower, so that that'll all level out. And really, anyone that's looking at doing pension or OPEB financing should take a long view of whether it works or not, because you can't look at it in a very small time period. You have to look at it over the whole life of the issue, just like with your investments. You would look at what your earnings are over a long time period, because your rate of returns fluctuate from one year to the next. So the biggest risk would be that the return on the investment may fall short of what you are actually paying on the debt service. And because we're at very low interest rate environments for the municipalities that have issued debt, those rates that they received are pretty low. I mean, depending on the term, ranged in the 2.0, let's say, 8% to 4.6, 4.7. And as you know, the investments that, on your pension system, you're allowed to invest in much different things than you are your operations. So those rate of returns really should be higher than what you're earning on your operating funds. And if they're not able to make over a 20-year period, a, you know, a 4% or 4.5% rate of return, there may be something wrong with the way that's being invested. The impact to the county's legal debt margin, the county has the capacity right now to issue about $418 million in debt. And the pension, proposed pension bond would be about $67 million if you were to fund it at the full amount. So you would still have a capacity to issue an additional $350 million. Now, I'm sure you know, but I think someone said this was recorded, that doesn't mean the county really has the capacity to issue $350 million in debt. While you legally could, you know, it's about affordability. You know, you wouldn't want to go out and issue, I don't want any member of the public thinking, oh, the county can issue $350 million. Well, you still have to have the wherewithal to service, to meet the debt service obligations. And for this, you know, for a pension bond, you are currently already paying your annual required contributions. So the debt service payments would be taking place of those annual required contributions. Another consideration that you really need to think about is how it would impact your The county does, you know, carry a favorable rating, and we have found that the rating agencies do not look negatively on issuing pension bonds. They want to know, however, how you're going to service the debt service, how you're going to pay for it. And I think all except one instance of other municipalities that have issued the debt, it was always, you know, we're spreading it the same way that we spread our annual required contributions. They want to make sure that you're dealing with the cost constraints, that you're looking at the overall cost of both your pension and your OPEB liability, and that you're doing things to minimize the cost. They want to know that it's affordable for you. Again, it really takes the place of the annual required contribution. But most importantly, they want to know how you're programming to pay the debt service, where you're taking the savings, because they would not like, for example, if you said, we're not going to pay any principal payments for the first five years. We want all of our savings upfront. We want to backload this and push off our payments. That would be a negative, I would think, to them. Now, that doesn't mean that they wouldn't allow certain savings, but they would view that as kicking the can down a little bit. And I should say Treasury would not be favorable, or look on that favorable either. This slide here just goes over the historical taxable and tax exempt rates. As you might remember, I said these bonds would have to be sold at a taxable interest rate. If you look at the far right side of this table, which shows the historical rates, you can see that the taxable and tax exempt rates are pretty close to one another. And on a historical perspective, they're pretty low interest rates. We used to show this slide back to the 80s, which is when I started in the business. And if it was back in the 80s, it would, the rates would have been in the double-digit interest rates.
Carrie, could you explain to the board the difference, why this is a taxable bond?
Because the federal government does not, just...
Says so?
Yeah, says so. It's interesting, because I've read opinions of national legal counsel that say that there might be ways to do that, but they, you know, they basically consider it arbitraging, so making money. And really, that's what people are doing on these bonds, is they're selling bonds at a lower interest rate and turning around and investing the money in earning a higher rate of return. So overall, you know, that's the whole theory. You're going to have to pay less out than you would have if you were to just sit and pay for it as you went along with your annual required contribution. And that is exactly why the federal government doesn't allow them to be sold at taxable, tax exempt interest rates. This slide just goes over the advantages and disadvantages of issuing bonds. The disadvantages are the flip side of the advantages. But, you know, the biggest disadvantage is that you are truly turning this into a hard liability or hard cost. Now, many would argue that pension is already a hard cost. There's some discussion on whether the post-employment healthcare is or is not. So I think the municipalities that have issued debt for healthcare have been much more thoughtful, and many of them have not issued it at the full 100% of the liability. But the other thing is, investment returns could be lower than the rate on the bonds. So when you look at, and a slide later will actually show you what our estimate of what the bond rate would be, what we look at with that is, we look at an all-in cost. So we aren't just looking at the bond cost. We want to package in any costs for doing the bond and give you a rate, so you know that is the rate that you need to at least make in the investment of your proceeds in order to break even. So the whole theory is, you want to make a lot more than that, so that it costs you less over time. It does not eliminate the need for future benefit payments, just like if you did not fund the bonds, you could have to pay additional annual required contributions, higher than what's projected right now. And it uses your capacity. We don't think that's really overwhelming disadvantage for the county. This slide here just shows what your current, well, it's not current, you haven't gotten your new actuarial, right? So you should be getting shortly, probably within a week or two, your new actuarial report. So these numbers would all have to be updated based on that, but I wouldn't expect that you would see a big difference. They should be pretty close to this. But you can base the bond amount based on your unfunded liability, based on either the actuarial value of assets or the market value of assets. And in your case, you know, because the actuarial value of assets uses a period of smoothing for investment losses or gains. And I think in all cases that we've looked at, you know, there's, there's investment losses that haven't quite been factored in. So if you were to sell bonds based on the actuarial value of assets, it would be just under $67 million. And your funding ratio under that is 63%. If you were to look at your market value of assets, you would need $70 million in bonds, because your funding ratio on that is just under 62%. This slide, and I apologize, there's a lot of words on here, but it's not really as relevant for Jackson County, but we also always like to look at it, because it basically shows if you were to sell the bonds at the, at the various, what your funding ratio would be. So if you sold at the market value, but you, your actuarial report would use the actuarial value, you would be a little bit overfunded. And then near the bottom of that slide, it actually shows you what the rate of return would need to be to make up the portion of the market losses that haven't been factored into your liability yet. So it's 7.58%. So for Jackson County, that's a nominal difference between that and your assumed rate of return of 7.5. For other entities, we've seen that differential be quite substantial. So your numbers are pretty consistent, whether you do it on one or the other. Very few people have used the market value of assets, and that is because the state makes us, the liability has to be within 150 days of when you deliver the bonds. And the reality of, by the time your actuary gets through their report, which you're, right now, you're about over 150, or somewhere close, you just wouldn't be able to do that. The timing just doesn't work. So we're talking to Treasury, trying to get them to look at that differently, but in your case, the difference between the two is nominal. This just shows what you would issue in bonds, whether, if you went under actuarial value, which is $67,355, versus market value, which is $71,190. Now, this is the page that everyone wants to see, and this is just taking your current amortization schedule at various rate of returns. The rate of return assumptions that you use in your actuarial report are 7.5%. So the left side there just shows what your projected amortization payment, based on your current UAL, unfunded liability is, over the time period. And the state makes us show it to you at various interest rates, so 1% lower than what you're earning, and 2% lower than what you're earning. And then the middle there shows what the estimated payments, bond payments, would be using those various rate of return assumptions. And then at the far right, that shows what the difference between your UAL payment, if you don't bond, versus your bond payments would be. So if you look at the bottom number, the savings ranges from $15 million to $33 million. And at the very bottom left, it shows the all-in true interest cost that we're estimating based on the current market, and that's a 4.697%. And that bottom line shows what the net present value savings or differential in those costs would be, based on that rate, for a present value rate. So that ranges anywhere from $9 million to $19 million. We included this slide just to show you what the differential would be if you only earned different, you issued your bonds based on your 7.5%, but you really only earned 5.5% or 6.5%. How much additional liability you would have. But I would actually state that that would be the case, whether you issue bonds or not, your liability would go up. But we like to show it, just to show that, you know, your funding level would change, and you would have to put additional payments in over time. For 5.5%, which would be an extremely low rate of return for a pension system, that would be another $43 million. And, you know, if that were projected from today, that would make your rate of, or your funding ratio 81%. At 6.5%, that would be an additional $20 million of liability, and it would change your funding ratio to 90%. Most municipalities are issuing these bonds for the savings. Basically, they're doing it for the arbitrage. They, you know, they strongly feel that they can earn higher rate of return than what they're paying on the debt service, which, at the end of the day, would give the city or county more money to use for other purposes. I've had a few of them actually have us structure the debt service around other things they're funding through their general fund. So maybe they have some bond payments that are coming off in the next two years, so they have us not pay very little in the first two years and then bump it up. So they're trying to create some budget relief there. But you should really always carefully understand the risks and rewards of doing a pension bond or a OPEB bond before proceeding with the pension bond or OPEB bond. If the county were to proceed, the steps would be to, you've already done a number of the top one, you know, the couple of top ones, you're closing out the plans. But the first thing would be to publish a notice of intent resolution, to give the public the right to circulate a petition and call for it to be brought to an election. You'd have to prepare a comprehensive financial plan. That plan would have to be brought back to you for approval. Then that gets, then you adopt a bond authorizing resolution, and that, along with your plan, gets filed with the state. We typically go up to the state, meet with them, they go through the plan, and we apply for a rating. They want to make sure your rating is not impacted by the issuance of the bonds. None of them have been. And once that Treasury approval is issued, we go into the market and we issue the bonds, we lock in the rates, and you get the money, and then it goes to your pension system. And then, you know, it really doesn't end there. You would work together with your investment manager to make sure that those proceeds were Is there any questions?
I've got several I wrote down. Some are for Mike and some are for you, if I could. Mike, the road bonds that we've just recently done, those don't count towards the figures that we were given here, I assume, or are they? They're not, okay?
Bearing on it.
The road, we had factored the road bonds into the legal debt margin already?
That part I understand, but they have no bearing on any of our math.
Right, okay.
Well, what, I guess, a little further on that, why would they factor into that if it's a separate...
We only have so much ability to borrow regardless of income stream.
Right.
Okay. I thought we still considered their funding separate from ours, even though we oversee them, but apparently not. Okay. The other one that we have upcoming is a radio system bond, correct? To the tune of about, what, 7.3, whatever? Nothing else we see on the horizon besides that for bonding?
I think potentially, if the townships start all passing millages or some form of for roads, that we may have to borrow more money, but we have plenty of capacity for that.
Okay. Have there been any municipalities that you're aware of that have done this, that have had things go south for them, so to speak, on the bonding?
Throughout the country, there has been, and a lot of those... Throughout the country, there has been, and a lot of those instant, when the state of Michigan put their legislation in place, they put conditions in that legislation to help guard against that. Like in, throughout the country, some, our, our, our law requires that you can't sell these bonds and then start giving your retirees more benefits. That would increase the liability. So that happened in other places. There was one state where people sold bonds and then they took them proceeds and invested it like you would your operating funds, and so you're not getting quite the benefit. But, you know, so there are cases, there, there's bad, you know, people that have done things that they shouldn't have. And like Michigan, when, we have a whole department that deals nothing but with pension finance, and when our legislation was drafted, they said they did a really good job of factoring in those things.
Well, that kind of seg, well, I'm not concerned about us doing those things, but my concern would be, what if the market retracts again, or God forbid crashes? That could put things really upside down for us, could it not? Which we would have to make the bond payment and potentially additionally make up the difference, correct?
That's why I said you have to take a long view, because if you're going to look at any small picture in time, there could always be that. But, and you're right, you would be at greater risk because your pot would be bigger, right? But if you were fully funded from your own sources and the market crashed, you know, you would have the same thing, but, you know, the, the goal is just to wait it out and to have things come back to normal. You don't sell things out when you're, you're down here, you know, you know, whose 401K hasn't been hit in the past. I mean, I was one of those that didn't panic. I just left things in, and now mine's back up over where it was before.
Well, the, the difference could be, though, that if we didn't bond and the market retracted, we would have to make up the difference of that. If we do the bonding and the market retracts, then we have to do both. We have to make the bond payment yet and make up the difference, correct?
If I may, you, you're, no. I mean, in the long run, yes, if it never comes back, but as long as you don't overreact, meaning start selling off stuff and things like that, the market, at least historically, is kind of up and down. And over the long run, meaning we're talking, what, twenty-five years here? What, what's our bond length on this, twenty-five?
Yeah.
Twenty-six? But over the long run, market's been fine, our, our average rate of return. And frankly, you know, the bond payment, yes, is fixed, but the, but the annual contribution is not, meaning you don't have to react and pay that, you know? There's some consequences, but if you don't have the money, you don't have the money, you know?
And it would be over a period, you wouldn't have that due in one year anyways. It would be over the remaining years of this, you know, whatever the amortization schedule would be.
I make one comment about, about the rate of return on the pension fund. For the last thirty years, it averaged, whoops, I'm looking at the wrong thing, uh, looks, it averaged seven point four percent. It's gonna be, at, every seven point four percent, looking back thirty years. Last year, two thousand sixteen, it was seven point eight percent. Last three years, it's four point eight. So the four point eight was a little less because we've got, one of those prior years wasn't so good. Granted, the future performance is not guaranteed, but I do think that past performance is indicative of how we manage the investment funds and, and the pension. So I just wanted to point that out. To compare the actual rate of return with what's the assumptions in the actuary report, we come out pretty close to the numbers that we're looking at. In other words, the savings each year of a million dollars approximately really is doable, okay? Under these assumptions, again, I have to qualify that.
Well, if I may too, well, has, Gary thus far really hasn't mentioned, she talked about, you know, a lot of communities are doing this, they're trying to save money, you know, through arbitrage.
Right.
That really wasn't my intent, in all honesty. It could be break even from, from my perspective. It's about cash flow and reducing the amount that we have to annually pay out, you know, when we're in a significant deficit operationally. If I can reduce what I have to pay out annually for like a million dollars, we're great. If we make money in the long run on it, even better. But if I spread out the cash flow, our budget is significantly helped.
That's it for me, thank you.
You mentioned in your presentation of the various rates you'd have to have to make this successful, when you mentioned seven point five eight, I think it was, is that correct?
To make this successful, you would have to, based on the current market, you'd have to earn more than four point six seven percent.
Four point six seven. What was that, seven point?
The seven and a half percent is your current assumed rate of return when you compute your actuarial liability, your unfunded actuarial liability. So, you know, everyone uses a little bit different rate, but that's right about what some people use, eight, eight and a half, so. So that, if you don't earn that seven and a half, that means you would just have to have a little bit more contribution somewhere in the future.
If I may, Dr. Tompkins, what, what, what it really, I'm just gonna try to put it in different terms. It, it's basically saying, you have this much money in your fund right now, we assume you're going to make seven point five percent interest over the next twenty-five years, and based on that assumption, you should have this much money. Therefore, you need to put this much money in annually or at this year or whatever it is. If it's eight point percent, eight percent, well, then our money grows faster, we have to put in less county tax dollars, is really what the assumptions are on that.
Right.
But you said that the growth over the last twenty, twenty-five years was averaged seven point four percent. So that's lower than the seven point five eight assumption that you?
That's the, that's lower than the assumption, but not necessarily lower than what we need. I mean, I'd like to, well, frankly, I'd like to see the assumption even lower, even higher, frankly, because if it's higher, our reduction, our ARC would go down. But there's, they're saying that this is what we believe you can get a rate of return, uh, in honest, because remember, they're just trying, it's their best guess what they think the rate should be to some degree, and they've said seven point five, and we have historically had seven point four, Jim, over the last thirty years. So it's, think about thirty years, that's really good. That's really close, what, according to the assumptions.
Also, I, I flip back to this, you know, right now, we're in a period of time where rates are going up. So that average includes the years, you know, shown on the right-hand side of this chart, where the, the interest rates were lower, just over this past, really since the election, presidential election, rates have came up, you know, a fair amount, especially on the short end where you're getting your investment earnings. So I think the likelihood, I'm not an investment advisor, you're going to have to ask your investment advisor the question of what, what they think, but there's probably a high likelihood that those rate of returns in the future are going to get better, because you're gonna, you know, you're not going to be in this last quadrant of this graph here anymore.
Either for you or Mike, the idea behind this is to address the two thou, uh, pre, employees prior to two thousand eight in terms of the pensions. Is that primarily what that's for?
It, it, it is. It's anybody who's in the defined benefit.
Okay.
You know, I didn't bring up, Mike, in the presentation, I should have. We are not allowed to include normal cost in the bonding. We've had entities ask us to do that. The law specifically does not allow for that. And the normal cost is your cost of your current employees that, you know, that is occurring now, that has not, it's not a liability yet because it hasn't occurred. You can only bond for the, you know, the liability for the past, not something into the future.
Mike? Might be for the minister here again. So if we, so optimally, if, if we earn or save X amount of dollars a year, which is projected, or certainly it's a possibility, are we looking at utilizing all that money to help balance our GF?
Yep, that's where the bulk of that money comes from. This, frankly, if we can spread out our cash flow and reduce it, our annual obligation by a million dollars, that's a million dollars less that I have to, or we have to figure out where it's coming from for the GF budget, operating budget.
Okay, one more. Thought I'd, yeah. I've done some reading. This talks about replacing a soft liability with a hard liability. Can you explain that?
Because you have flexibility not to fund your pension contribution or to fund it lower than what you're supposed to, but when you issue debt, it's a default. If you do not make those bond payments, it's, it's a default. So you have a first budget obligation to make the debt service payments.
Could you speak to us, if we were to choose to not issue debt and say, well, we're just going to reduce what we pay, our ARC's six point two, we're going to make a payment of five point two, what are the ramifications of that?
Well, your liability goes up, right?
Funding level drops, liability, you know, continues to go up, but overall, there's some other ramifications to that.
Yeah.
You know, from, you know, a rating agency's perspective.
Rating, it'll impact your rating. There's, I mean, accounting ramifications on it, there's, there's all kinds of, I mean, in general, you know, we, we say that about, because I really still leave it soft versus hard, but the comparison between pension versus post-employment healthcare is much different, because in Michigan, pension is, you, you, that is a cost, period. You, you can't step away from that.
Carl, to elaborate a little more fully, you know, it's like any, any money you may borrow on your own, you know, if you borrow money, you have an obligation to pay it back. If you do not pay it back in a timely manner, consistent with the terms that you borrowed it, it will adversely affect your credit rating and a whole lot of other things.
It would go to a D.
You would be bad.
You would actually, you go from a double A to a D, which is in default, which is...
Right. We, we, obviously, we can't do that. And there are additional, or I should say, not additional, but there are other ramifications if we were to choose not to pay our ARC, our annual required contribution every year, you know? But we could, and it's just not the same ramifications as defaulting on a loan.
Yeah. So, you know, that's what cities in, you know, in fiscal distress did, they just didn't fund those, and, you know, it didn't get them very fair.
So, so there is a potential risk, obviously, but on the other hand, there is hopefully a greater potential for financial gain on this.
Right.
Okay.
The ones that make me a little more nervous are the ones that have a shorter time period, because there's less time to make up that, you know, to make that rate of return, or the ones that are doing the post-employment healthcare, because on that side, what happens if there's a national healthcare? You know, there, there's just a lot of questions on that side.
And frankly, that's, that's part of the reason when we were thinking about this, healthcare really did not enter. We're funding our healthcare, it's pay-as-you-go. We have no sludge funds set aside for this. And given the state of healthcare, we chose not to even consider it, you know, go with the pension, something we know. I, I gotta tell you, I look at this and I, and I look at the current rating in the market, and I don't really see a whole lot of downside. We have to outperform four point six, four point seven percent over the twenty-five-year period. I don't see any problem with you guys doing that, you've always done it, even in bad, you know, the bad years. I mean, it's, 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 didn't take long to come back. Now, if you, if we were to have a, a long run of under four point seven percent, well, that's a problem, but, but...
There could be other problems.
But the economy comes and goes, that's true, and, but my point is, historically, for the long term, we're much better off. And frankly, if the market takes a, a dive, we're still on a hook. A DB, a defined benefit, is a DB. We have to, we, we will have to make the payments regardless, unless we're going to fall to our retirees, which I don't see that happening at all, so.
I think that you'd have state consequences with that.
Okay, well, we're going to take it to, well, first of all, let me ask, I mean, I, I feel comfortable, obviously, I've been looking at this a lot longer than you have, moving on to committee and then full board for serious consideration, depending on the, our next conversation we have, because they're, they're tied together, frankly. Does anyone feel that that is not something that we should even entertain, or feel that that's too fast, or should I bring it back next month, or, you know, yesterday?
I'm okay with the direction it's headed as far as procedure, I, I just, and I'll continue to think about whether I'm going to support it or not, I probably will, but I just don't like borrowing money to pay money. I mean, I just, we have bills, let's just pay them.
Yeah, this is smart money.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And for the second part of this, because we still yet have the J dot employee, DB employees that have an open pension, so it makes all employees a DB over there. As, just a reminder, the board, at least my take on the board on this has been that we have so stated that we're not hiring new people until we deal with the DB question over there. And, and to that end, we have not hired full-time people. I know they have some needs over there, but they've been putting off and hiring some seasonal and some casual and some of those things, yes, but those folks aren't eligible anyways. So this issue, well, it's germane and critical to the timing for, for this bonding issue. If not for the effort for the bonding issue, it would be an issue of union negotiations, which, you know, their contract expires end of this year. But given that our timing is of the essence, because I'm, I think everyone's very confident that the market, interest rates and so forth continue to rise, we believe that to be true, which would adversely affect our abilities. Yes, sir?
Mike, could it be worthwhile to explain the fact that we have three essentially different pensions, well, not different pensions, but three different groups, I guess, with a pension system, and who and who, who will and won't be impacted by this, like medical care facility?
They would be the only entity not impacted by this.
And they're more than a hundred percent funded right now.
Yeah, they're already over a hundred percent, they're, but the rest of us, well, I should, yeah, exactly, and road to Mormon. Anyway, Christopher, you want to take us through?
Sure, thank you. Good morning. You have a detailed summary of the matter before you in our staff report, along with the draft letter of understanding that we are presenting to the association. In short, the proposal is to close the defined benefit plan, as we're talking about the last open plan, correct? In the county?
Second.
Second to the last, okay. And this will be effective June first, and it's under consideration by the association. My understanding is they're meeting this evening to vote on the matter, pending, of course, your feedback and input today. So they're moving in parallel, joint approvals. There are a couple of changes in the staff report. I think you'll find this to be good news. Under current situation, item E, we cite that there are eight non-union employees. We just had one resignation yesterday, so that would drop that to seven. And in fact, one of those seven is in the drop, which means that the dollar amount cited in analysis B for financial, the consequences for us as a department ongoing are less than cited here, so that's good news. Happy to answer any questions.
Mike or Chris, just to be clear, so it would be closing it to new employees, old employees or current employees?
in items one through nine to explain the new plan, which is congruent with the rest of the county employees that receive the MERS defined contribution plan.
And then new employees under the defined contribution plan would pay 5%?
Right.
And the current employees would pay what percent?
Current employees?
Right.
They would continue on a 10% cap.
Okay.
In the DB plan.
Right. And that is from the current rate of, are they paying 17% right now?
Our, the total from the actuarial study is 29, so in our last union negotiations, we capped it at 12, if you recall, and then we extended that same benefit to the non-union employees who were part of that before they moved out of the union. So that's the seven employees that I mentioned. So, yeah, the cap is now proposed under the letter of understanding to drop to 10.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman Chauwo?
A question for Jim Lathrum. Under state law, as of 2006, we're required to do an actuarial report to impact this fund. Has that actuarial report been done yet and what's the impact to the fund when we do the actuarial report? Do we know those numbers?
I believe we do. We did a special report, I don't know, a couple of months ago. Couple of months ago, we did a special report and I recall, what, 170,000 additional costs to close the JC dot employees.
Have you shared that with the pension board yet?
I have, I have not, no.
Okay, would you please?
Sure.
Because it needs to be shared there.
Certainly. Yes, sir.
Along that same note then, how did you calculate the 77,000 here?
Bruce assisted me with the calculations there. I assume that was gross payroll.
We took a look at what 12% would cost us and then just added in the additional 2% or what 12% is already costing us. Yeah, and then just added in 2%.
And when you say actuarially, 177,000, Jim, what, how does that, you know, I mean, if you can explain, I know when it gets into actuarial analysis, it's kind of deep.
Well, my understanding, I think, well, that was the second time we had the calculation, I think it was two, three years ago, we had a special report prepared and a decision was made then to keep the plan open to new employees. And so when we redid that, then that is simply the change in the ARC for JC dot portion. In other words, when we have it, when we have a regular actuarial report, we, the ARC is broken into two segments. One is for the county and one is for JC dot. So that's simply the increase by closing relative to what it would have been had we, you know, we keep it open.
So you're saying that's, that's a change in the ARC?
Yep.
And then the 77,000 is a change in?
Again, that's a change in employee portion.
Contribution.
Contribution, okay. So to the extent that, if you're, I think what you want me to answer there is, to the extent the employees pay less, then the employer's going to pay more.
Exactly.
So yes, that would affect the ARC and increase the ARC. Okay, slightly. And again, each year, well, depends on how you look at it, slightly relative to the $6 million that the county pays.
Well, I just want to make sure that, that all these numbers and changes have been added into the calculations, because otherwise we'll fall, come up with a different number later.
Yep. And if I may add to that too, we've had cases, if you recall, we had a change in the employee contribution to our deputies in the past where there was an arbitration, there was a grievance filed and we agreed that they would pay less. So it's, it's not unlike that.
Okay. Questions, concerns? We'll go to Commissioner Carl.
I understand the idea of getting everybody on defined contribution. Obviously, I believe that's a good idea. But my question is, as far as those who are currently on, currently receive pensions and moving forward, is the money there to sustain paying these pensions? What's that look like?
Yes, yes, it is. I mean, the, at the moment, the pension fund has, I believe, $152 million as of last week, market value in the fund. And while there's, there's different ways to calculate it, we're around 70-some percent funded. So, so the money is there. And also the annual contribution, we make an effort on our part to pay our 6 million and JC dot, again, that's, that's a separate funding source there, so we calculate that separately. So there's, there's plenty of funding there.
And if I may add, when we add all this in, this is the whole point of, from my perspective, the whole point of it is, instead of having to pay a $6.2 million ARC, we pay a $5 million debt service. Therefore, cash flow savings of 1.2 million, whatever the case, somewhere in that area, which really goes a long way, because that's 1.2 million, we do not have to take out of both JC dot fund and general fund to fund the ARC. Other questions? Dave, I believe, had a question.
Just a couple of questions. So what's the plan with us to run it through committee and then through the board this month?
Yes.
Okay. And does it require us to change the pension bylaws as well? I would think that it probably does.
When you closed the last time, did you make a bylaw change to the pension?
I don't know.
For those who are here, I mean-
I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there. I just want to make sure that we're covering all the bases.
So.
Okay. And then the chair asked about the actuarial analysis. Is there a time requirement on when the retirement board or this board should receive that in relation to when we act or not? Or does it just say before, Steve, if you know?
I believe it just says before, and it has to be an independent one provided to the employer, us, as well as the retirement board and notification of the change. Pension board will be meeting this Thursday, but not meeting until June. So if there's a timing issue, then there, someone ought to-
Well, you got the report, so let's get it in there.
Well, we have to make sure that it, it's one thing to sit down and calculate, we're at 8% and we're going to pay 12%. That's not what the numbers are. It's supposed to be an actuarial report done by an independent agency and that takes a little longer than, than simple calculations.
Was this not done by our actuary?
Yes, this is done by Gabriel, yes.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought it was done by the actuary. It was done by, we were trying to-
Well, the, with respect to closing the plan, yes, that was done by Gabriel. With respect to making this change in the employee contribution, no, I mean, that's, that's in the future. Yeah, yeah.
Right now.
So it may not be the C right.
Well, I guess what we need to look at then is, because we did an actuarial, that may or may not satisfy the law, depending on what that nuance of that law, so we need to double check that.
Other than that, David, yeah?
That's it for me. That's it for me, thank you.
Other questions, concerns? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Is there any other items to come from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, any public comment? Seeing nor hearing none, any commissioner comments? John?
Mike, I was wondering where we were with looking for the clinic that we had talked about for employees and family.
We've had a couple meetings, I know, well, I'm looking for Martin Chek. We expect to bring something in June is the plan. They're working on it. The last meeting was with HAP, so currently we're with Blue Cross with Shield, but HAP is looking to be into the market, so we're seriously looking at them, seeing if there are some savings we can eke out by switching providers, be it Blue Cross or HAP. And of course, work on Jackson Health Network, we're pretty excited about that relationship as it, as it blossoms for some savings. We really truly believe there's some significant savings there for that. So hopefully, hopefully, we'll have something in June. And there's a whole lot of players. Last time, we probably had 20 people in a room from the different organizations.
Mike, any, anything on the insurance refunding lawsuit with the road department?
No, in fact, last I saw Kelly, I asked her if she had heard anything. She had not. But I'll be in contact with Peter Cole's firm here, so I can ask them about that. I've got some other issues I'm dealing with them on.
And to refresh my memory, that's Austin, two other counties, Ingham and Calhoun?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Tompkins?
Mike, HAP is the insurance arm of Henry Ford Hospital and Jackson Health Network is part of Allegiance, which is in 50% with JHN and with Allegiance Hospital. So ultimately, all three of those are intertwined in the same business entity.
Yes, I understand. In fact, I'm, I'm very hopeful that as a group, they can put forward a great plan for us.
Any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, we are adjourned.